All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen on July 27th, 2020. It is 6:01, and we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice. Okay, until further notice to keep our members and staff safe and to comply with RSA 91- A, the state of emergency and Governor's orders restriction on public gatherings in town of Alton is moving from in-person meetings to remote audio participation meetings. To remotely attend the meetings, audio only, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov. For instructions or telephone, the Selectmen's office at 603-875-2113, or 603-875-0229. There continues to be no public input at this time. Okay, amendments to the agendas.
Chairman.
Yep.
I'd like to talk briefly, probably when we have the lady from the Water Department on tonight, a little bit about the situation with the arsenic levels. Right, old business, and she's going to be talking to us with old business anyway.
Okay.
First, I'm assuming.
Your old business?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on Water Department because we'll have her on for the EJ Prescott. And I'm going to add five to new business, the Water Department for the truck. Okay, no announcements.
Let's make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Hello, Bob?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Virgil, yes? Favor? Domission of public comments. We have one here that's on the Rand Hill Realty, but we do not respond to anonymous complaints. We won't use your name on the air or anything, but we do not respond to anonymous complaints. That was voted in well over a year ago. The next announcement is, Mr. Shea, I would like to ask the Board of Selectmen to consider the Town Employee Manual on our town website. Some time ago, I requested a copy, but was advised it could only be made available at a charge of 50 cents per page, a considerable cost given the size of the manual. I was afforded the opportunity to review the manual on-site, which was somewhat helpful. I expected the manual to be a topic, typical employee handbook, but instead found it to contain detailed instructions on all manners of town operations. I understand an effort is underway to rewrite the document, separating it into the Employees Manual and an Operations Manual. This certainly makes sense. Posting the manual on-site would afford taxpayers the opportunity to understand how the town functions and might have an added benefit of encouragement suggestions for changes. I can't see any downside to doing so. Also like to repeat a request I made back in May, asking if would it be possible to post the Board of Selectmen minutes recordings within a short time after the meeting? Unless I'm mistaken, the most recent posted recording is on June 15th, before five weeks ago. I don't know what's involved, but for citizens following town government activities, a prompt posting would be helpful. Now, the manual, we do not put on the website because that has personnel in it. So we do not post that on our website. Any other comments on posting the manual?
I don't know what's involved, how soon the...
The minutes for the meeting?
Yeah, I don't know how soon it takes for the videos to go on. I don't know.
Usually it takes a day or two. I mean, we have, you know, during this state of emergency, things have been done a little differently and a little quicker when possible. We did have some problems with the server back maybe, I don't know, a month or two ago, and so there was a delay there then. But you'll notice that the end of Selectmen's meetings, Josh stays here and he works. What he's doing is he's doing what he would do the following morning, a day or two, depending on what else is needed. And he's doing stuff with the audio and the video and he's putting it into a file for the ladies in the Selectmen's office to start on the minute, and then he puts the video onto the website for viewing.
So basically, the problem has been solved as far as we had to wait too long for it to be uploaded.
Yeah, everyone needs to understand, nothing is perfect. There were hiccups along the way, and we certainly had our share of hiccups during this state of emergency with the Zoom and everything.
Exactly.
Yeah. I noticed the Zoom is gone tonight, right?
No, we're audio.
We're still on.
Yeah.
How close? This got shorter and it said audio only.
Oh, yeah, that's probably... Well, we had a request to shorten that top paragraph, so...
Now, do we have to get into the Club Moral Fund to get him a bedroom set to put in there? Back and down Saturdays and Sundays in the award.
I know, I know.
Well, I hope that... Mr. Shea?
Do the best that we can.
Okay. Appointments, we have none. New business, Emergency Management Portable Electronic Sign. We have...
Ryan.
Ryan. You get Ryan on the phone?
I have the exact number, but I do have somebody called Call-In User, so I can try that.
Try them all. We'll find them in there somewhere.
Make it work.
We'll get them. Get them, just hang up. Ryan, is this you?
Hello, it is me.
Ryan. We are on the portable electronic sign.
Yes, yes. So what this is, is this is the formal purchase, our Emergency Management Grant that we've been working on for the message board, Electronic Message Board, has been approved now officially through all the channels, including Governor and Council. And we received the award letter that I think you guys have seen or have in front of you. This is the formal invoice to make that purchase and to move forward with it under the grant. So I'm just looking for final approval from the Board to go ahead and move forward with that purchase. Once we make the purchase, I will submit for reimbursement using our Emergency Management Meetings and staff that attend those meetings as our soft match for the grant portion.
Now, the grant's going to cover this?
Yes, the grant will cover it. We're going to be short... It only covers up to $15,000, so we're going to be short the balance over $15,000, which I'll have to pay out of the operating budget. But we will submit... Yeah, the $695? We will, we will, we will, once we pay that though, that $695 balance, we will submit to the, under the CARES Act, the Gopher Act, for COVID as well as the COVID expense.
Good, that sounds good. Need a motion. Make a motion that we approve the Emergency Management Team for the portable sign for the grant for the sum of $15,000, $695. Second.
Second.
Alos, favor?
All.
Oh, that's right, all right. Paul?
Yes.
Yes. All. Virgil, yes. Thank you, Chief. Good job.
Thank you very much. All right, appreciate it. You gentlemen, have a good evening.
You too. Bid request. Now, we have number two, Highway Department, bid specification, equipment outfitting for 10-wheeler dump.
Good evening.
Ken?
Very good. Okay, a little explanation?
Please.
Okay, what we've done is gone back through the numbers. I think we sent up a list of the Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, exactly where the purchases have gone out. What we have remaining is about $65,000. Because we're keeping the sander from the 10-wheeler, it brought this into play that we have a good possibility of ordering the equipment for the 10-wheeler now as well. Now, the problem that we have right now, the six-wheeler has been delivered to the equipment place. The dump body, which was already been ordered when we awarded the bid, is still five months out. So putting this package together for the 10-wheeler and putting it out the bid, there's no guarantee we'll get it in right away. That may be another seven or eight months out. And that has to do with Canada... I'm sorry.
That's that email that you all have at your seat.
Are we going to be able to have these trucks for plowing?
No. No, we'd be lucky if we see the six-wheeler that we've already awarded by January or February. And it all has to do with dump bodies coming out of Canada.
Chairman? Yes. Kenny, what's the holdup on the six-wheeler again, the dump body?
Yeah, the dump body itself, and that's because the way we ordered the package through Viking, it's the dump bodies that are being built in Canada and shipped to the US, which many of the bodies are being done that way out of Canada. And Canadian people are being a little different with the COVID-19.
Well, you know, if I remember properly, Mr. Chairman, fellow Board members, that wasn't the low bid. And I had a question at the time on when we could get these products. Here we are, right back where we started from. Didn't realize that dump body was coming out of Canada.
You all have this at your seat, this was a text message from...
Almost 99% of the dump bodies come from Canada. It's not any one individual retailer that's carrying it. It's everybody. Everybody's having the same issue.
Well, I, you know, I haven't checked into that. I just know this boy, that's an awful long time. And this email that you're referring to, I just got this tonight.
So did I. We all did.
Kenny?
Sent us a courtesy.
Why can't you put the sander right on the frame for the winner? And then send it in for the body when it gets here?
It will take some manufacturing in order to do that. It's not a flatbed.
Yeah, those sanders, they're made with...
Right. And this isn't the first time. I mean, the last little truck we ordered, we didn't get till February of the following year. So it's, you know, that's on the last one. I just wanted to be able, after I did all the numbers, we were able to order the 10-wheeler because we're going to be in the same boat with that. But actually, we weren't even putting that out to bid till after March's town meeting. But because we are keeping the sander from the 10-wheeler, we actually have enough money left in the Capital Reserve to go ahead and start this process now rather than next March.
Right, yeah.
That's the reason I brought it up. And I'm just showing you the reason, because the dump bodies are so far out. I mean, that was ordered the day we gave them the bid. They ordered everything, and they're still waiting. And believe me, they're not happy about this whole thing either.
I understand how that's, I'm sure none of them are happy right now. It's happening with the lumber industry as well.
It's across the country, you know, pressure-treated across the country trying to come in. It's coming in little by little, but even the, even all the, all the work being done by marine construction outfits are really feeling the crunch. They're traveling everywhere just to get bits and pieces.
You can't get lumber, you can't get anything right now. Nothing's coming out of Canada.
And that's not us, that's Canada, they're being protective. You know, I understand that. But, and again, we awarded the bid, it's awarded to Viking. I'm just trying to show that if we ordered that 10-wheeler, or we put it out to bid and we ordered the 10-wheeler right away, we'd probably still be looking late, but you know, at least we get it ordered now.
Right.
It should be here before March, I hope.
So Kenny, what is the quote here that you want, the $53,000 for the quote?
No, no, no. That was just a quote to show you that it was below the $65,000 that was left in the Capital Reserve. The quote was just to show you that I'm able to put it out to bid and it would be an acceptable bid. That's all that was. That was just a quote to show you where the numbers are at. Now, we'll put it out to bid officially by the bid specifications, and basically those specifications you see on the quote are what we're going to put it out to bid for.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Kenny, in backup, you have the quotation for $53,355, but on the next page, you've got a sander for $20,845.
That's what we're not getting.
Getting that. Right, they're keeping the sander, taking that one out. Keeping the old sander.
That's what we saved by keeping the sander.
Right, okay, good. Another question on that dump body issue. What's the brand of the dump body?
I think that's Brandon, but I'm not positive.
And then?
Yes, and it has a 210 PSI bid on it.
Thank you. Anybody else? I make a motion that we allow Kenny to put the 10-wheeler equipment package out to bid. Second. Discussion? All right, Bob?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Virgil, yes. All yeses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Go far, we got one more with you.
Yes, sir.
With the sand bid.
Yeah, it comes out every few years, it's just another bid, and this will be the reason we're checking it out right now so we can hopefully get some results prior to you seeing the budget so we know where we're at.
Chairman? Yes, Bob? Just a quick question. Your bid specification, general information. You have certified laboratory test results, materials, meet and exceed, the Hampshire DOT specifications. Do we get that information?
Yeah, we can request a SIF test through them, and they've actually, there's actually samples that are dropped off here most of the time when they do it.
Good.
And the DOT specification is nothing more than a SIF test, so we don't end up something with three-inch rock in it.
So you have records of that?
No, I can request it, I can request it from the company if wanted.
Yeah, because it says right here. I'm very familiar with getting the test results, but I just didn't know if you do or not.
I've seen them.
Okay, another question I had, Mr. Chairman, was Kenny, was you've got it for 221, 2022, 2023? Yes, in the price?
Yes.
What happens if next year you find you can get it somewhere cheaper? Are we bound to this for the three years?
Unless the company backs out of it, I would say we are, because it is a contract that we're signing. And the idea of that is they can plan on it as well as everything else. We found out that most everything came in cheaper. By bidding it out for three years.
I just want a clarification of that, that's all. Yeah, we're tucked out, we'd be good with this, the three-year bid.
Yeah, and in the contract, it shows we have a, we can negotiate two more years on the contracts.
But it's very important that those laboratory tests, believe me. Okay, I need a motion. I make a motion. Go ahead, you got another question? No, no, I moved it. Sand bids for three years. Second. Paul?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Virgil, yes. All yeses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kenny.
Okay.
All right. Wentworth Pond DES notification. This is on the Sinobacteria Alert, Wentworth Pond and all. Surface blooms can rapidly change, accumulate various... As a result, the Hampshire Department of Environmental Services has issued a Sinobacteria Alert for those who use the bodies, water bodies for recreation. Please continue to monitor your individual shorelines for changing conditions and avoid contact. The alert is not based on a toxin evaluation and is intended as a precautionary measure for short-term exposure. This is on Wentworth Pond, which would be the Mary Meeting River, because we already have this in Mills Pond, which is across the street from the fire station. Yes. We have high concentrations. So this is on Mills, Wentworth Pond, yes, on the Mary Meeting River, right by the dam. Yes. We don't need any...
Very concerning. I think it's interesting that the state put up those tiny little signs, more or less indicating, "Don't eat the fish" in Mill Pond.
Well, we put that up.
I thought the state took that over, and it was their job at that point.
No, we put the signs up.
So originally, they asked that it be posted, and they supplied a couple of signs. And we put them up on behalf of DES. But then the Selectmen, I think it was last year, asked that more signs of the same sign.
The schools were still bringing the kids down there fishing. And the red sign looked like it went to the fire department because they had the dry hide in there.
But there's people fishing there.
They're in there, kayak. People don't understand it. Well, I think that we should, I think we should drive sheets where the COVID is and close that pond off from getting into the river. We don't need a motion on that, right? That's just information.
Information only.
Okay, five would be Water Department. This is the amendment for Water Department, which is...
You too.
EJ Prescott first, sorry, people. No, no, we have the truck first, it's five, I'm in the business.
Okay, all right.
That's what I was looking for, her email on the draw. Good, I dare. This Courtney on? Courtney? Hello?
Good evening.
Courtney, we are discussing a truck.
Yes, so I came to some of you in October last year requesting a vehicle, and we tabled the quotes that I got.
Yeah.
Right now, I've found what I think is a really good deal is a 2019 F-350 V8 diesel with an eight-and-a-half-foot V-plow from Portsmouth Ford for $46,591. The reason I'm asking to get a truck is because of the extensive repairs that we've done on the white truck. I think you may have gotten the work order list from the Highway Department mechanics. And this, this list is not for the life of the vehicle. This spreadsheet was generated by Carrie when she started, so she hasn't been here for the life of the vehicle. But since 2017, the estimated repairs have been about $4,300 to the white truck. It's had multiple wheel bearings replaced, disc covers, axles, rotors, pads, multiple joints. What's that?
Why are we going through wheel bearings so much? They being put in right?
One, one specific one when I was here was a faulty ball joint sent from Rochester board. So they actually, I think if you look on May of 2019, we repaired that twice. That would be a question for the mechanic. I did speak to Warren today about the vehicle. Right now, due to be repaired is another wheel bearing, the sending unit fuel pump, the EVAT canister that needs another alignment, and possible catalytic converters. He lifted it up today, and the utility body is starting to really bubble in some of the doors and over by the cab corners. We were both discussing that that truck is pulling the excavator. It's got 65,000 miles. It's getting worked. On top of the weight of the excavator and the trailer, that's loaded up with 1,000 pounds of brass. So like I had explained before in October, I am driving my vehicle to every job site, and I have been for the past year and a half. It's loaded up with equipment. When the excavator is loading up the dump truck, that's being used, and usually the white truck is torn apart with every tool we have on job sites. I'm running for parts, pipe, anything like that with my truck. So my plans would be to get this pickup truck, make it the guy's truck. Then there'll be DOT legal so they can pull the excavator and make the current white truck, the 2011, the superintendent truck, which if we baby it and do the repairs and, you know, just use it for, you know, extra parts, my plans were to put a gas caddy on it so we don't have to disrupt our digging to fuel up equipment. That would be what I would like to do with the truck.
I understand, I know we need a truck down there. How close are them guys to getting the CDL? I mean, we discussed this a year ago when we bought the one ton, about having a CDL for that.
Well, I understand that, but you can't just roll up with the equipment we have and expect to get, you know, walk in there and get your CDL. We have to make sure everything's in tip-top shape before we send it down there.
It should be in tip-top shape anyways, because we're a municipality, and if there's something wrong with the truck, we need to get it fixed because we can be so far.
Right.
They should be, even if they've got to borrow one of the town trucks down the townbound to go get a CDL, they should be working on that.
It does, it's not free anymore to just go down there and pay for your test.
I realize it ain't free. You've got to get a book, study it, and then go down with the truck and take it.
Yeah, but you need to pay for that now.
Yeah.
If I, if I remember correctly, it was mandated that it was given $5,000 to go and take your CDL now.
Oh, no, no, it ain't $5,000. If you go for a school, a course for it, all you've got to do is get a book and study it and go down and take it.
Get a driver's test.
Pardon? You've got a driver's test. They have the book right in the front door, Driver's Safety, right there. They're right in a box by the front door.
Okay.
And any of the highway guys, Mr. Chairman, would help them.
Right. They've done it, yes.
I believe they changed that $5,000 fee due to COVID because, you know, there's no classroom time or anything like that, but...
You don't need classroom time to take your CDL. You can study the book and go down and take the driver's test right down there. You don't need a certificate from classrooms or anything else.
Okay.
It was just down there last week.
That still doesn't satisfy the problem with the white truck.
Have you been taking care of... Have you been taking care of, of paying for any repairs or anything on your truck? Have you been getting compensated?
Have I been doing what?
Your own truck, you've been taking care of any repairs and tires on your own?
I have not put in for mileage or anything for my vehicle until last week.
Okay.
So, um, you know, that's, that's my thing is, you know, I'm, I'm the only department head that is in their own vehicle on job sites, you know, um, running my own truck.
And I agree with you 100%. You shouldn't have to run a truck.
Shouldn't have to be doing that.
I think we always, you know, you shouldn't be using your own vehicle. Issue, Mr. Chairman, is buying a truck. Add food, please.
I found one thing I'd like down here. One vendor had a, uh, finance plan. Is that something we should be looking at more or not?
Well, the way I looked at it is that we have financed trucks in the past, but if we have the money, why add a 5.9% interest rate?
Right.
With the same warranty.
Hey, Courtney, Town Administrator would like to speak.
So, in the past history of the town government, when purchasing vehicles, it's just purchased outright, save on interest and everything, unless it's a lease. The lease, there's some interest in it and that's where it, a certain amount of time, we do that with the police department.
Also, have we put it in front of the fee?
And then, and then, you know, one, one other exception would be a bond for a fire truck because that's, you know, it's about a million dollars or so.
Right.
But to buy a pickup truck, um, generally, the past practice has been to just go right ahead and purchase it outright as long as you have the funds.
You used the wrong phrase.
Now, we have-
I meant to use the lease.
The one ton is a lease.
It was the lease, brother.
Is it what, 12,000, a little under 12,000 a year?
A little under 12, yep.
We didn't get a lease price on this one.
Yeah, Hillgrove Ford did.
They did.
The last one down the list.
Well, the, the other issue, and I don't mean to interrupt you, is, is there's not a lot of trucks available.
No, I know.
The production has completely diminished. Um, Irwins in LaFonia actually won the state bid for this vehicle and they don't have any left. And they don't have it coming. So this, this one is a 2019 leftover, which is, you know, $10,000 less than the other vehicles.
I, I agree with her that she shouldn't have to run her personal truck.
Say that again, listen.
I said it's kind of a no-brainer.
Oh, no, she shouldn't be using it.
Oh, no, no, there's no arguing with that.
No, there's no issue. That's, that's-
No issue there.
We have-
Really isn't it that much?
We have the 47,000 in the account.
Yes.
Bob?
Yep, sorry. I thought you were just saying that out loud. Yeah, the, uh, the account right now available will have 313,000.
Okay.
Ms. Kim?
Yes.
You know, come on, on Fisher's snowplows.
Yes.
The plow price is through Portsmouth Ford?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Is the plow price through Co-, uh, Portsmouth Ford?
Yes, because they're installing it. It doesn't come equipped with a plow right, right now. They're gonna install it. And that's the standard price that I've been getting through all the quotes.
You're still gonna keep the plow on the white truck?
Yes. That way, you know, if the white truck breaks down, there's another truck with a plow. If we get a heavy storm, someone can go out or I can go out with one truck. We can clear hydrants quicker. Uh, especially if we get those back-to-back storms where you get three, four feet around the, the hydrants.
Right.
You can send two people instead of one guy in one truck, plowing in the other one just along for the ride. Not saying that's what they're doing, but, you know, one will shovel. This way, you, you hit two different areas of town and get things done quicker. Because right now, if we, if we break down with the white truck, we don't have a backup plow. And as much as we like to borrow as much as we can from the Highway Department, when they're slammed, they're slammed as well.
But they got a whole bunch of trucks down there for you to borrow. Gotta have a CDL.
Right.
Yeah, well.
Courtney, Courtney, what kind of a cab is on that truck?
It's just a regular cab pickup truck. So because of our VAS program that we're discussing with the inventory, we're not gonna have to carry as much stuff on the truck. We're gonna equip the shop. Everything is gonna be on there. They'll have a very limited brass supply, everything that they need, and we'll just do toolboxes. Just because the, the utility bodies, the lock stop working, they start rotting out. Um, the doors open halfway around the rotary. I, I just, they're not, I don't think they last as long as the truck could.
Nope, no, they don't. So this is just a straight eight-foot bed with just a, uh, one seat cap?
Yep.
Automatic?
Automatic.
Probably automatic.
Diesel?
Yeah, and they, all come standard with the, basically the same. You get the power lint windows. They do have backup cameras now, which is good for a safety aspect, but, and that's not anything extra. That's what they're coming equipped with. But it's just an XL work truck.
No, with Fisher's plow, it'd be a big plow, it'd be pretty close to that price.
Yeah, but I'd like the business of town if possible, you know what I mean? I mean, I-
Why couldn't I get a price and come back next week with the plow over there?
Well,
They're just not allowing you.
Well, the problem is with this, Mr. Chairman, is that truck's not gonna probably last longer than that block, believe me.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, these trucks.
I find them-
I, I did talk to Courtney today and I told her, you know, these are usually, these type purchases in additions, this is in addition also to the Water Department. I've done through a budgetary and a planning process. And I understand the situation.
Bob, this was discussed prior to you becoming a selectman in October last year.
Yeah.
And it was, it was told to be tabled. Um, and I talked to Ruben today and he actually said, you know, I was, I was wondering when you were coming back to, to discuss this. So it's not a completely blindsided situation.
No.
Well, I'm the new guy in the block, so I'm-
Yeah, I'm just filling you in on the past.
Yeah, Courtney, this is Paul. I remember talking last year about it.
Yep.
And, uh, I didn't hear from you this time, but, uh, looking at it and knowing that you've been using your truck for a year and a half, which is bad, we shouldn't be asking you to do that. We shouldn't have to do that.
Well, I was trying to keep the budget down, you know? It wasn't, you know, our gas lines, you know, it, it goes up and down. So I was trying to, you know, do the decent thing, but eventually it, it comes to the point where, you know, you gotta do something here. It's, I mean, I'm going home with curb boxes in the back of my truck and just, you know-
Girl.
So we all agree.
I just blew that budget all to hell.
I think, um, I think it'd be a good idea to, to look into this and not wait too long because I think this is gonna go fast.
Well, I will tell you.
I will.
I, I, I talked to Liz earlier and, um, because this was gonna be, just fit in the, uh, the agenda today and she wasn't sure it was gonna be able to be put in there. Um, I reached out to Portsmouth Ford and the gentleman told me that basically, you know, it's a 2019. It's a hot item. We got a lot of people interested. Um, if you're not meeting with them tonight, when are you gonna meet with them? And I said, "Next Monday." And he said, "If it doesn't sell by Friday, I'll hold it for you." That doesn't seem very comforting to me, so.
No. Oh, no.
I mean, you're jumping up $10,000 for the next truck in line, so.
I think we should, we should act on it.
But money's gonna come out of the-
Water Department Revenue Fund.
Okay.
Yes.
This will be right in the motion.
I think we oughta act on this and, uh, I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we, um, approve Courtney to go to, um, and, and to, uh, look at the, picking up the Portsmouth Ford pickup truck, uh, for the sum of $46,591.
Please.
Courtney? Water, Water Department Revenue Fund, Revenue Fund, yes. Second?
I'll start with that.
Thank you, everybody. Bob, hope? All those in favor, Bob?
Right.
Paul?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Virgil, yes.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Don't go anywhere yet, girl.
Yes, I'm still here. Well, I can still say thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Second thing is, are we gonna fix that sidewalk? Because we can't leave a sidewalk tore up like that.
No, so we have, um, a bunch of different paving to do. Um, and it's gonna rain tomorrow, but our plan is to pave before the end of the week. We have a couple different patches. What's that?
Be a good day to pave. Be a good day to pave if it's raining.
Yeah, so we try to make it worth our while. Instead of taking a bunch of different trips to Brock's, we try to get enough to do a couple different patches, so that's on the agenda for this week.
Because I think if it's not, it should be roped off over there.
Okay.
Somebody don't walk in and stink or trip or something and come back at you.
It was all filled with gravel and compacted, but we can go over there and cone it off for sure.
Alright, the next is, um, E.J. Prescott contract.
Yep, so, um, basically, um, Liz and Attorney Sessler had some, um, concerns with a few items on the, uh, contract. Um, one was the 90-day, um, contract, um, to, to end the contract. Um, Bob from E.J. Prescott said that the third, we could change that to 30 days. Um, so the contract that you guys have in front of you, all we have to do is cross out 30 days and initial it and he will entertain that, um, to the contract. So nothing has changed as far as our, um, agreement with E.J. Prescott for the VAS program that we discussed at the last meeting.
Liz, you said you changed some stuff on this?
Yeah, that was, that was one of it. I did that in the signature file. The other one had to do with the insurance coverage. The insurance certificate was for the Water Works Department only and I had them include the town of Alton, um, as an additional insured, which we require on every certificate of insurance. And Attorney Sessler has given it a full legal review and it's good to go.
Okay.
Sounds good.
No questions? I make a motion that we sign the, okay the contract for E.J. Prescott for the Water Department. Second? Motion made by Virgil, seconded by Paul LaRicheau. Yes. Bob?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Virgil, yes. One more question, Courtney. Don't go anywhere yet.
Alright, thank you.
This one's from Phil.
Okay, um, how's the arsenic level situation coming along, Courtney?
Okay, so we are only required to test every, um, three months, uh, every other year, I'm sorry. Um, that sample was taken for quarter, I think, I believe it was quarter two. The well is still being worked on. Um, we should be tying that up by the middle of next week. Um, you know, like I said, with the, the shipping has been slowed down. Vendors coming in as far as electricians and whatnot, it's, it's been hard to coordinate. Um, so when we turn that back on, um, we will be required to test every quarter. Um, and we can do some, um, non-compliance testing to kind of see where we're ending up before we do our compliance testing and see how the well's performing. Um, but once the well has not been turned on, um, it's still under maintenance. There's actually no power to it right now.
And what are they doing to the well? Rewiring the building?
No, well, they have to, they have a panel that has to be wired and then the, the pump guy needs to come in and run the wires to the, the well pump itself and then they need to do a startup test.
Okay.
How long would it be before the state comes in the long arm of the law and try to give us tremendous fines on this?
Well, that would be all dependent on when they change the, the regulations. So in 2021, the arsenic standard is, is going lower. Um, and that's for all municipalities, any public drinking water systems need to meet the new guidelines.
Do we have to? Go ahead.
What's that?
Do we have to add any more equipment down there for the arsenic to lower it?
We may have to, yep. Um, with discussion with the state and the past testing, um, it's been kind of up and down. But, uh, with the new regulations, we, we could have to put in some arsenic mitigation because the new standard would be .001 and we've had numerous samples over that, that limit.
I don't know about the board, but I think it would be worth looking into that to make sure we can get the setup and what it's gonna cost us and we have a heads up before we get done with a $1,000 price tag. It'd be nice to look into it.
If we do have to put that filtration in, you're probably looking into, um, extending the building.
Well, something we might want the county attorney to look into, information's been given to me that these new regulations signed by the governor amount to an unfunded mandate.
Yep.
And back in 1984, there was amendment to the Constitution. It's unconstitutional with the state constitution. And I think maybe it's, uh, it's amendment 28A, it was passed in 84, and it might not be a bad thing for our town attorney to look in that, look into that so that we're prepared in case, uh, the state tries to clog us with these new, this new regulation that might be unconstitutional.
Would you like Liz to send it out to Jim?
Yes, I would. I, I can give Liz the, it's, it's amendment 28A, passed in 19, 1984.
Okay.
Unfunded mandates, which is what this is.
Well, that, it hasn't passed yet.
What's that?
I don't believe that's passed yet, the new mandate.
No, in 2021, they go into a pass.
But he signed it, right? The governor signed it.
We did.
That's why I'm saying, we should, we should look into it.
Yeah. Alright, any more questions for Courtney?
No.
Okay, Courtney, you may go to bed.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Have a good night, Courtney. Thank you.
You too. Bye-bye.
Alright, special events, Castleberry Fair.
Yes, Town Administrator would like to speak to it.
Um, Josh, is Ryan still on or not? So, this application came before you months ago, actually back in the winter.
I remember.
Yep, and it was put on hold and then the state of emergency happened and it didn't look good to habit. But since then, um, restrictions have loosened a little bit and we've discussed this particular event at the emergency management team meeting regularly. And so at a recent meeting, it was determined that if the vendor would meet the criteria that is set by the state, then the EMT would be okay with it and then the board would, could approve it if they wanted to. So...
Did that, I could, I may ask?
Yes, go ahead.
Does that also include, uh, not having quite as many vendors?
Yes.
Reduction in vendors, which would be up to Castleberry Farm, uh, Castleberry, uh, to determine who is allowed the list?
Yes, and normally she would have between 70 and 80 vendors, I believe, maybe even more.
Yeah, that's big.
But she's, she's cut it down to 48, I think it is.
Yeah.
There's a map, a sketch on there with her proposal. Um, so if, if you do approve this, which I, I, you know, it's, it's your decision, but if you could add into your motion that, that you approve it pending the emergency management director being okay with, with everything that she has presented because he wants to go down there and, and check it out, you know, with her and make sure, double check.
Right. I think two things. One is, we're gonna be supplying the Alton Bay Community Center and they're gonna have to pay extra for the cleaning of it because we're gonna have to put and wipe it down because they use the bathroom and everything in that community center and it's gonna cost us because if we're making them wipe down- because if we're making them wipe down services, then we're gonna have to put somebody down there to wipe down our services.
Yeah, that's gonna need a thorough.
So I think we need to charge them extra for the cleaning.
A thorough.
But I mean, after, uh, drawing it and after, because, I mean, we, we, if we say you've gotta wipe down your boots and clean it, then I think that we have to put somebody in there to wipe down the community center during the day.
Or, or at least, you, you know.
Or the other option.
We can, we can work on it, you know, or, or, or there can be some supplies in there, which actually they could supply themselves, and whichever vendor uses it needs to be sure to clean, you know, they touch the thing.
Or the other option is not to use the building.
Exactly.
And not just use the building at all, I think.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Thank you. I think we should even use the building, that should be closed. I don't think they have to, and there's no reason, they have their own tenders, they have their own public, they have their public restrooms down the street. I don't think we even need to use the building. And I would like to make sure that they don't interfere with the swim docks and they don't interfere with shippers. That swim dock has been quite busy.
Oh, yeah, it has, and I don't think they should be.
They don't interfere with the lawn and stuff right there by the swim dock.
So you, did you look at the diagram?
I'm looking at, yes, yes.
Right, okay.
And I think that, I think that we have to, we're on a thin line there because we're so busy this year.
I, I know.
Down there, that we're on a thin line whether we put them across the street with party vendors or something, but I think that that waterfront, I don't think that we should be tying that up all weekend because it's very, very busy.
Extremely busy, we should have, uh, people lining up at parks and the parking, um, uh.
We've had a hot.
Parking lot, nobody's working, so they're all up.
Been jammed every weekend. I, I just think really it. Or do we give a lawn over by parks or something to open that water up?
Well, I, that's, that's your decision.
Well, that's why I'm asking you, because you, you do beers and stuff, don't you? Farming markets and stuff.
Well, that's different.
I know, but you know about this more than I do, or they, we do.
Well, she, she has come back with a re-revamped proposal to the board after doing some research with the state of New Hampshire guidelines that the governor
The six feet apart.
has put into place. Um, you know. And it does not include across the street on the other side.
And I realize that, but what I'm saying is where she's only got the few tents, it might be worth putting them all over there.
I don't think forty-eight tents would fit over there because she's already separated them out. You can, as far as, it could be one right beside the other.
Are we taking pictures of the grass and everything?
Oh, yeah, we'll do the, the pre-inspection and the post-inspection.
Good. I don't see any reason why she can't use the outside of the building and all the way around. She's only got three tenders on the inside. Those three tenders could be on the outside without, without too much difficulty, I would think.
So how, how about then, I mean, this is, you're, this, what everyone's talking about is changing her revised proposal. How about if I have it rescheduled for the next meeting, have her in, uh, remotely attend?
Yes.
And then you can talk to her about all these different things that you are considering.
Okay.
And, and then you could, you know, I, I can't answer for her, I, I don't know.
I don't think anything should be across the street, to be honest with you. But I'm talking about just the building, those three vendors, everything else is pretty much speaks for itself. Talking about the three vendors that are inside the building being relocated would be basically.
I- inside.
Inside. Can I, forty-seven, forty-six, and forty-eight?
Yeah.
The rest of them, the rest of them can all sit and just walk in three vendors.
Yeah, so it shuts the building off.
It just shuts the building, and it's, lock the doors.
Shut the building.
I think it's pretty simple. It needs to move for it.
I think that's amazing, Charlie.
Yeah, well, I think that. You don't have to clean it. I think you ought to, um, rental of a community center right now anyways, because we should change the rental agreement that you have to pay for the cleaning and the wipe down, people rent it.
Yeah.
Or, or maybe, you know, you would allow her to rent a one-quarter potty for the vendors. You know, there's, there's all kinds of options that you really you need to think of all these for the next meeting, I'll get it rescheduled.
And can you, can you put the, uh, community center rental on there? Because I think during COVID, we have to spend extra wiping it down and everything. I don't think five dollars rentals covering, you know what I mean? Because we get going and wipe, wipe, make sure the toilets are washed, make sure the handles are washed. Which is a lot more than what we normally do.
This would be something for discussion at the next meeting.
All right. I'd also like to know what our plans are. How do the vendors plan to enforce social distancing in their little tents?
Yep, yeah.
She must have a plan for that, I'm guessing. I'd just like to know what it is.
Let's leave that up to the emergency team. They're gonna have to inspect it.
Yes, yes.
So they're the ones that would yay or nay.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Yeah.
That's gonna be inspected. Make sure she does what she's saying.
Oh, definitely.
Management team gonna?
I would think that would affect the, right, John and the management team.
So, so, all right, so the emergency management team will not inspect it while it's going on?
But before, before it opens.
Beforehand, what I mentioned earlier was the emergency management director will consult with her, go meet on site to make sure that everything is, you know, separated enough.
Right.
Yes, right. But only after the board approves it, and your approval would be conditional as long as she is able to do to satisfy all the requirements. It's kind of like two approvals here almost, you know?
Right.
Well, like we're gonna get first to get to it. You, you set, you, you know, you set your, your, right, for, for the whole property and everything.
Set my standards?
And then the emergency management director will make sure that she's following what you've approved and also what the governor is mandating.
Right, it takes both.
I see that that shut it down.
Well, that's, that, I mean, technically that's an option, but shut it down.
No, they shut it down.
But, you know, maybe.
That's the easy way, I've heard.
The thing is, it is, I think they can even, I think they could still do this with a lot less vendors than even the forty-eighth.
Well, that's something that you would need to talk with her.
Yeah, because you have a certain point she's. No, no, it, it only makes sense to so many vendors to make money, I get it. Well, not so much the vendors to make money, but she's gotta be able to break even and make money.
That's what I'm talking, she makes, she's talking about.
That's great, fair. It's, she does a lot. Okay, moving on, selectmen's report. Bob?
What's that?
Oh, Phil?
The, uh, Old Home, Old Home Day dash Old Home Weekend Committee has not met since the last time. We met, we're meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
Okay, um, it does seem that there's gonna be a Water Bank Sam concert on the Friday night, that weekend. And I still haven't got a clear cut, this is God's honest truth, this is gonna happen from the fire chief about the barbecue, but the last time I asked him, he said, we're really heading that way. But I mean, we, we're gonna call it the weekend, we gotta know.
All right, good.
Uh, the car show with the entertainment and the food trucks, I can tell you more next week about that. I, I would imagine that Roger, our chairman, will have to meet with the chief of police as to the positioning of the food trucks, that sort of thing.
Okay.
And, uh, I know Roger last year promised to work with the businesses out here so that there's ample parking for them, which I believe he's doing.
Go ahead.
So, basically, is it Old Home Day or is it Old Home Weekend?
Unless Main Street shut down, it ain't Old Home Day.
Trying to do something, so. Like, like, I think the town needs a reason to come together and do something.
Yeah.
Is that it?
That's it, Bill. I'll have more for you next week.
Conservation meeting, we discussed Jesus Valley and Mount Major parking. Jesus Valley, the conservation and the forestry department is working on people at the end there, there's a little tow road that goes up onto the logging landing up there. So we're working with the people, Mr. Wilder and everybody's working with the people. So we might have some time to go in to do about two hundred feet of road just to make it passable to a big parking lot, which truck has to pull up there and do about a four-point turn to, get turned around with the cloud. This, he'd be able to go up and then have a hammerhead. We'd give about twenty-five cars parking, which would relieve the parking on Jesus Valley. And the forest department is working on Mount Major parking. Got about, they are working on to get it expanded, and we got a big, a, um, timber cut application for that whole side of the mountain. Built. We might have views. View technicians are going in. Quite a few timber applications for Dewell, Stockbridge, Cedar Mountain, Alton Mountain, got like six of them the other night.
No kidding?
Yeah. And all big cuts. So, if they are working on the parking, they're hoping within the next month or so to have Jesus Valley figured out, maybe we can send Kenny in there to do, fix the road up like he did up on the mountain. And put up, because the path, the logging landings all there, we just gotta kind of season it up. So it's being worked on.
Does the signage that was put up from Jesus Valley Road help?
Help some, yeah.
Because I, I saw on the thing they were putting in.
Yeah, and it's still a lot of cars. So we're hoping by opening up the parking up there, it'll give it relief because you'd be able to fit like twenty, twenty-five cars in this logging. Hopefully it'll give that end of the road some relief. Blocking people in and stuff. And Liz?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dean Chairman. I have a few things to bring up. The first one is you, you all should have received my email um, in regards to Green Oaks Realty LLC versus Town of Alton, the town won, hands down.
Yep, I sat and read it the other night here before conservation.
Okay. Uh, the next thing, um, which is in your binder is, um, we have received two separate letters from Primex in regards to our workers' comp program and unemployment compensation program. Uh, we are receiving two premium holidays from them, which is kind of like a rebate. They do this every so often, not necessarily every year, but the workers' comp, we will be receiving a check for twenty-nine thousand eight oh nine and eighty-eight cents.
Nice.
Unemployment, we, we will be receiving a check for one thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty-five cents.
And how much are they going on?
Don't know. We won't know until November. Uh, the next item has to do with, um, a document that's in your binder, from Stan Tech Engineering. Um, Stan Tech Engineering has been hired by DOT, um, DOT in regards to the East Alton Convenience Store on twenty-eight A, apparently some history must show some leakage of underground gasoline tanks. So Stan Tech is doing, taking water or stamp drinking water samples from different properties in the area. And we happen to own one, which is the transfer station.
That is why they put the above tank in again, and they just tore that out.
So in order for Stan Tech to go onto the property and take a drinking water sample, they need your approval. And, um, there's a.
So they can go on to the dump property?
Yes, yep. There's an access agreement, um, which they sent. If you, um.
Yeah, let me see it right now.
I've had the attorney look at it, everything's fine. So if, I just need a motion to approve the site access agreement and authorize me to sign it on your behalf so that they can get this done.
All right.
That's it. That, well, that's it for that. I've got one other thing after that, but.
Well, what, Mr. Chairman, what's the benefit to the town?
There's no benefit to the town.
No, but it helps your citizens to make sure that, that, that they don't have the PFOAs in their water.
Oh, from our property?
No, it's from East Alton Gas Station.
What you're talking about going on our property?
Because they have to test the well up there, they gotta test the drinking water to see if this, if the contaminants back from when it leaked is traveling. Just like they, they do the same thing up at Irving's on top of one forty. They have a bunch of wells up there from the spill, and they test it.
I'm, I'm very familiar with what they.
What are you asking?
They're not a good area, higher area.
Why? Test all, uh, we have test wells in there for contaminants anyways.
Yeah.
This is for the drinking water.
And it's for specific products, yeah, for lean.
This is for the PFOAs, they're not testing.
Yeah, where are they going to test?
Well, they wanna take it out of a spigot, and there's one spigot up there, and that is on the outside of the superintendent's office.
Right.
So they need to let it run for about ten minutes or so, and then they take the water sample from the spigot. That's how they're gonna do it.
We ever done that?
No idea.
No.
Not in my time here.
To, to my knowledge, any of the water that's up there is not potable water.
We don't drink that water.
For example.
The town, the town don't even drink their own water.
Yes, okay.
I mean, look at our water bills every month. For bottled water, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know. Brought water in.
No, but we don't drink it, but they have to test it to see if the contaminants are moving that way.
Good.
I make a motion that we allow Syntec to test the water at the dump.
And, and authorize me to sign.
An authorized list to sign the agreement with them.
Access agreement.
I'll second.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Virgil, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then the last item I have.
Jeez, somebody didn't have nothing, we should go to law.
I don't have any non-public. Is, uh, in your binder also, under TA report, you have a memo from me in regards to the town boat launch repairs you asked at the last meeting to, for the finance manager and I to.
Look into the repair money.
The best place to, and this is it. Which is basically the funds for the town boat launch repairs would be.
A railroad square park.
Yep, expended out of the grounds and maintenance budget, the railroad square park line item. Uh, because this is the bottom line budget, those, those costs would be covered in the, uh, patriotic purposes budget.
I was just gonna say that, yeah. You've got five here, is the funds will be covered out of the fireworks.
Line, yep.
So using both?
No, so the funds.
Hang on, guys.
So the funds stay in the patriotic purposes budget, the fireworks line.
Yeah.
They stay there, but you spend out of the grounds and maintenance budget. So that line will be over expended, but it's a bottom line budget, so the grand total of the entire town budget, one will cover the other in the, in the.
Why don't we just take it out of patriotic and say that's it?
Because you're doing it a hundred percent right. This is how you do it legally.
I know, bottom line.
Thank you, Bob.
Bottom line budget.
I'm sorry, you are.
You don't need to apologize for agreeing with me.
Make a motion that we.
Thank you.
Repair the boat launch, and the repair money comes out of grounds and maintenance, railroad square park line, zero one dash four one nine four dash seven five nine. Second. Discussion.
Yes.
Paul?
Yep.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have, uh, Chairman.
All right, now we go to approval of minutes, July twentieth.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from July twentieth, since PM meeting.
Second. Bob?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Virgil, yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Minutes, July twentieth, public.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So these have already been.
Oh, wait, I got a motion on table, I got a second for us.
All right.
Second.
Okay.
So these, these non-public minutes have already been sealed, as you can tell, and in accordance with the legal opinion you got last week, there's no need to reseal them. They're, they're sealed.
So we need to get them out.
They're, they're sealed, no, you need to approve the minutes, the draft minutes. You just don't need to reseal them because they're already sealed. They stay sealed until you unseal them.
Shouldn't put down. The motion should read, then approve the previous sealed on public minutes.
That's your way of doing it.
That, prove, prove them unsealed.
Hey, I'll second that.
All right. Bob?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, no consent agenda tonight.
That's correct.
And no non-pub tonight.
That's correct.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, second. Oh, I gotta take a poll for that, though. Bob?
Yep.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Virgil, yes. I don't know why you're saying yes, Phil.